That has been working with the seminary and L R K on the plans for the redevelopment of the seminary property. So many of you I've met before at our neighborhood meetings. I'm very happy to see you. Thank you so much for coming out. This is the first, as you know, of three evenings in which we will begin to refine the information that we have been gaining from the neighbors, from the seminary, and from the town as a whole into actual conceptual designs. I'm probably saying something that's incorrect, but that's the way I think about it. And I'm not quite sure what's happening now, but I do believe that Shane Berg is going to talk a little bit about the specifics of the seminary's needs. And that Jim Constantine from L R K is going to be talking about the process of creating the conceptual designs. And if I'm wrong, they will correct me, but thank you for coming. And if you have comments that you don't have a chance to make when you walk around the rooms afterwards, there are comment sheets out on the table. Do take them and make sure we get them so that we capture all of your thoughts, both positive and heaven forbid negative. So thanks very much for coming.
Thank you, everybody. I want to echo those words of gratitude for all of you who are coming out tonight and giving an evening to this process. Some of you have given a lot of evenings and Saturday mornings and afternoons to this process, and we're really grateful for that. As Gail said, I'm Shane Berg. I'm the executive vice president at Princeton Seminary. I have been a student at the seminary. I have been a member of the faculty there, and now am a member of the senior administration. Everything we're doing in this project is for our students. When we get up in the morning and brush our teeth and look at ourselves in the mirror, we're thinking about our students, and it's the last thing we think about before we go to bed. We're so proud of the young people who come to study with us, these wonderful graduate students in our master's programs and our Ph D. programs, who feel inspired by their Christian faith to come and be trained as leaders, to go out and to serve communities in their ministries and in their work and in their teaching and scholarship and everything we do. We do for these amazingly talented people who come and commit to study with us for two or three or, in some cases, even five years. We have about 440 of these students at present. They come from all over the United States and Canada and from more than 20 countries around the world. It's an amazingly diverse and talented group of students. Forty percent of our students are non-white. Many of them are international. And we have been educating them there on our campus since 1812. That's when we first came to the neighborhood, when the General Assembly of the Presbyterian Church rented a little house up by Trinity Episcopal Church. And the first professor of the seminary, Archibald Alexander, whom everything is named after, came to the school and had three students that first fall to the present. So under the new president, Craig Barnes, he came in 2013. I came onto his leadership team in 2014, and we've had some new colleagues who've joined since, some colleagues that are from the previous administration who are part of the leadership team. And we engaged in a deep dive on our mission and our identity and our strategy. The kind of theological graduate education that we do is really expensive. We subsidize the student experience in every way. Most students pay little or no tuition. We have great housing for them. We have a world-class faculty. We underwrite the cost of living. And to educate students in this intensive kind of environment is really expensive. And many schools in our industry are moving to different models. They're moving to not providing housing, to commuter and hybrid models, and especially into online kinds of models. We really decided in our strategic planning that we were not going to move in that direction, that we were going to continue to bring students to the Princeton campus and educate them in a community setting, in a learning environment, where they not only learn from their professors, but from one another as they're brought together into this crucible of leadership formation. So we made the decision that that's what we were going to be about. That's where we wanted to allocate our resources. And in fact, we were so committed to that that we became convinced that this is a quality proposition, not a quantity proposition. We wanted to invest more resources in a smaller group of highly qualified students. So we decided that we wanted to get smaller in order to intensify and raise the quality of that educational experience. And along that line, we began to think about how the campus would need to change to support that model. And we immediately began to contemplate the state of affairs that we've lamented for some time, and that's really that we have two campuses, that we had some of our students, our unmarried students, living in the historic dorms on the core campus, a few students over at the Tenant Roberts property, but then many of them out in our West Windsor apartments. And I can tell you, as a student who lived at the seminary out in those West Windsor apartments, it does create two campuses. We're not a very big school, and I still meet students from my class, the class of 2000, whom I don't know. And the reason is they were single students and they lived up on the main campus. So we began to think about ways that we could create one community. So we knew we were going to get smaller. That was a significant data point. When we started this process, Tenant Roberts site was not only something we were willing to release, was on the market. We had a broker, it was being shown. We, in fact, had a full price offer on that. But many of us on that leadership team were really hesitant for that property to be released to another buyer. We felt like that it was the answer to our being a unified campus, and we wanted to invest in that in a way that furthered our educational mission and also enhanced the neighborhood. So we began contemplating this plan to retain that site, moving from a high of 550 students three years ago to a target of 360 students by the fall of 2022. We're about halfway there. We're at 440 students. We want to reinvest the value of those West Windsor apartments into that Tenant Roberts site. We want to build something really world-class. We'll see a corresponding reduction through attrition of our workforce as we become a smaller campus, smaller geographically, smaller student body. So when we were at 550 students and about 240 employees, I mean, on any given day, there might be 790 people on our campus. By the time the dust clears, that number will probably be closer to 550. So that's 240 or 50 fewer people kind of on the campus on a daily basis, and no more traffic coming in from West Windsor. So we began speaking to our neighbors and to the town about how that Tenant Roberts site might be redeveloped, what we might do there. And that's the set of conversations last spring that led to the invitation to join the redevelopment process in which we find ourselves now, in which these 10 parcels were designated for redevelopment. We have committed to a collaborative planning process, of which the city is the steward. We are a primary partner, but the community is a partner as well. And so we spent the fall listening. Now we're trying to transition into beginning to doing some planning and drawing, and that's where we find ourselves tonight. I will briefly recite the four goals of our plan that I think many in this room know. We want to build residential accommodations on the Tenant Roberts site, and we're shooting for about 120 units. We want to eventually build a new hotel conferencing center at the Erdman site between Edgehill and Library Place to replace the current hotel conferencing site. That project will be 10 or 12 years down the road. We want to preserve and beautify that green space at the corner of Hibben and Mercer that serves as our recreation field and make that a resource that is, that better serves the neighborhood, both aesthetically and in terms of character, and also in terms of actual usage, making that available to people. And there are four historic homes that are included in those parcels designated for redevelopment. And those are there because they're next to sites that could be redeveloped. And so the redevelopment plan envisions making sure not only that those houses are preserved, but that what is built next to them doesn't detract from their historic character. So it's actually a safeguard for homes that are next to sites to be redeveloped. So I told Jim and Gail I'd be as brief as possible, but I want to just take, I do want to take the prerogative to talk a little bit about historic preservation. And I know this is a sensitive issue in this community, as it is in many others, but especially in this community. And so I want to talk a little bit about the seminary's point of view on historic preservation. So the first thing I want to say is that we value historic preservation. It's always at the forefront of our thinking about the future of our campus. If you look at the display that we've set up in the next room, you'll see these 19th century buildings that are at the very heart of our plan for the future, buildings like Alexander Hall, Brown Hall, Hodge Hall, Stewart Hall, our primary classroom building, Miller Chapel, where our students worship every day. In fact, right now, we're on the cusp of beginning a major exterior restoration and renovation project, Stewart Hall, that will return the exterior of that building to its original state, both in terms of its structure and integrity and also its appearance. And we, having finished the exterior of Brown Hall, are now renovating the interior so it's more comfortable for our students. The rooms will have bathrooms rather than common bathrooms on the single floor. And it's just an example of the way that we think about our buildings. Adaptive reuse is our first instinct. We've done a number of adaptive reuse projects. In the case of Spear Library, adaptive reuse was our first instinct, and we studied it at great time and expense. And we came to the conclusion, in the case of Spear Library, that it simply wasn't going to be sufficient. Adaptive reuse was not going to be able to keep, preserve that building and serve our educational needs. But the library gives you an indication of how we think about a project like that. We wanted to try to preserve those buildings and use them. When it wasn't possible, we built something really beautiful, of high quality, of architectural integrity in its place. When it came to looking at that Tenant Roberts site, we started down the same path of asking how do we live with the buildings on the site? I remember our architect, Rayford Law, sketching and saying, you know, I just, I think it's going to be really challenging to keep this building array and to get more units on the site and to make it look like it's going to need to look. It's going to look, it's going to look crowded, and it's going to not be attractive. And our consultant, Mark Hebden, from Ewing Cole in Philadelphia, saying, you know, the engineering analysis on the building is not coming back in a very promising way. Even if we go down to the envelope of the building, it isn't, it isn't the proper width. We can't build, rebuild inside it and get ADA compliance. And the heights of the floors are not adequate for what we want to do in terms of systems. And so there are real questions about the viability of that adaptive reuse. And so we came to have a different point of view on how we would honor historic preservation principles in thinking about that site. I want to say a word about those in a minute. The Historic Preservation Commission has issued a report giving comment on our project, and they've strongly urged us to keep those buildings in their current array. And I want to say how much we respect the Historic Preservation Commission, its work, both in this report and generally in the town. They serve a really vital purpose in this community. It is an institution that has a lot of historic buildings and historic homes. We work in partnership with the HPC, and we value that. We have, in this instance, come to a different point of view, but in fidelity to the work and the stature of the HPC, part of the planning in the next couple of days will be to test a scenario that includes keeping those buildings in their current configuration and building out something behind them. So as a way of showing transparently what happens if you try to work with that scheme, and so that'll be given a fair shake in the next couple of days. Our vision is that we can be true to that site. First school came onto that site in 1830, the Edgehill School with Professor Patton. In the 1800s, it morphed into two other schools, a classical academy and a military academy, before becoming a private residence, and then it converted back to a school when John Hale-Hun bought it in 1920. We bought it in 1943 for our Tenant School of Christian Education. And along that history, there was a lot of buildings that went up, that were moved around, that burned down and were rebuilt. And so the school that has had that site has always made it work for its educational purposes. And we feel like the way that we can make that site work for our educational purposes and honor the historic character of the neighborhood and the architectural legacy of Rolf Bauern, who designed Tenant Hall and Whitley Gymnasium, is to build buildings of real character and quality and integrity that serve our educational needs, acknowledge the residential scale and character of the neighborhood, and are the kinds of buildings that are placemaking. So if I can make a sort of, I mean, not an Avalon Bay, but a Rockefeller College. I mean, that's the way we think about this. So we, educational institutions evolve, and that site has evolved with educational institutions. We want to do that in a way that honors the architectural legacy, but allows us to look forward to our future. I want to step aside now and allow Jim the floor, but let me say just a few words of thanks. I'm really grateful to Gail Omen and the Redevelopment Committee for their leadership of this process, to Jim Constantine for his design of the process and bringing us to this point, and his colleague Chris Cosenza as well. Many citizens in Princeton have engaged this process, and we're really grateful for that. But I want to say a special word of thanks to our neighbors. Our near neighbors there in the Mercer Hill neighborhood have hung in there with us for almost a year now, and they've given us a lot of time and a lot of feedback. And there are, there are all kinds of serious issues around this project. We're not at all naive about the fact that we're putting a big construction project, literally, in your backyards. It's not a small thing. I've often said to people, I haven't heard anything from our neighbors that I would not myself say if I owned a home in the neighborhood. And I do live in the neighborhood, though it's a seminary home. So the graciousness, the patience, the partnership that our neighbors have shown has been humbling to me, and I'm really grateful for that. Thank you.
You're Shane. Can you hear me? Is this on? Yes. Hi, I'm Jim Constantine from L R K. We're the planning consultant that's working with the Ad Hoc Committee, municipality, and really leading this public-private, and for Princeton, really, sort of a new way of doing planning. We hope that you'll come back to join us tomorrow night to sort of see a preview in the community room of the emerging concepts, and then back in this room on Thursday evening for a final presentation. By way of background, the 10 properties, I know there's a few newcomers in the room that were included in the area in need of redevelopment or shown up here in red. You'll see those in a little greater detail when we zoom in. The reason that these were, we used this process, municipality did, was that the reexamine from 2010 of the, excuse me, 2017, excuse me, recent of the master plan identified the tenant campus as being considered for redevelopment and suggested that if that were to take place, that the community should be involved in the process. And so, beginning in June, the council took a very firm position and said that if we end up designating them, we should have a process that's highly, that has a high level of involvement from the community, because there's an opportunity to address several issues. We set up goals and objectives for this effort that, to a large degree, really are derived from the existing community master plan, which we have boards and a station in the next room. We're not going to take questions in here, but we really want to pulse you back so that you can get one-on-one answers. But on the existing zoning and the master plan, you'll see Derek and Michael La Place, our new town planner, who will help address those. The master plan is chock full of warnings and concerns about the educational zoning and institution, the way institutions interface with neighborhoods. And so we're really trying to use this process to revisit that. And as our first goal states, and I'm going to go through these one by one, just give you a very quick overview, to try to involve the neighborhood and the community and come out with outcomes that are better than existing zoning. Without going into a lot of detail, again, Michael and Derek can walk you through what some of that means, but here is the existing Stockton Street, the existing Tenant Roberts Campus right here in the middle. And imposed on that, and actually, it wasn't supposed to come up on the first, you can see the existing building envelopes for the E4 zoning and situated right here on the Tenant Roberts Campus. It's actually to scale, that's the St. Paul School from the corner of Nassau and Moran Avenue, which is using about 40% of the available floor area ratio on that site today. And so there are potential impacts under the existing zoning. You could build two and a half times that. The Tenant Roberts site could build, you could build two-thirds of the Lewis Center for the Arts. So about 100, over 100,000 square feet of existing zoning possible there, with impacts that, in many cases, would far outweigh anything that's being reviewed in this current concept. And in addition to that, it's permitted today. So it's important to remember that as kind of a baseline. We also know that there are existing conditions, and we had several meetings with the neighbors in December, some follow-up meetings out there. We did a walk and talk. We've had several meetings here with the Ad Hoc Committee. Traffic was brought clear to our attention, that there are serious problems, particularly on Hibben and Edgehill, as there's sort of a cut-through movement that sort of follows the flow of those arrows, the circles or the existing traffic lights. And we began to dig in in response to direction and input from the neighbors to look at a series of alternatives where we could use town planning, by that meaning, what could we do with the streets and any potential new streets, blocks, driveways, where access would occur, to try to resolve the existing parking traffic issues and at the same time accommodate a possible concept involving redevelopment. From that, we basically have derived what we think are a series of improvements that, I'm not going to say that there's 100% consensus on these, but that we've received a lot of positive feedback and acknowledgement that these could help. They begin with looking and trying to make the Library Place corridor really function more like a collector. And so one idea is to put a roundabout at the corner of Library and Mercer Street, because there's some odd geometry that's there today, make some of the turns difficult. There's backing and stacking. People avoid Library. That's some of the pass-through traffic that occurs on Edgehill and Hibben. We also think if Library functions better, it helps folks on Lover's Lane, because they're also suffering some of that pass-through traffic. So there's plenty of room to accommodate it. The roundabout also offers placemaking opportunities to identify the theological seminary campus as part of the town gown interface that occurs there. We've also looked at the other end of Library and Stockton. We have what's referred to as the longest traffic signal in town. There may be ways to improve it just as a signal. There may be other ways that would actually involve adding an additional lane so that we could get a full, a full movement of left turns. I think we're still sort of acknowledging and studying that. We know we interface with the Department of Transportation there. Another improvement that's been discussed is actually adding in a rear lane from Library Place that would help to pick up and allow for the potential to close several existing driveways on Stockton Library and Edgehill Street. The closure of those driveways could be consolidated in a rear lane. It would allow for on-street parking, which begins down at Trinity Church, to be pulled down Stockton Street to create a better gateway into town. We might be able to negotiate with DOT to get the speed limit down another five miles an hour, but the whole notion of just trying to use on-street parking as part of the whole sequence of slowing traffic, making it aware it's coming into town, I think there's a sense right now that you are on the state highway in the environs of Princeton right up until you reach Library Place, and an abrupt change, and the same thing in the other direction in terms of cars speeding out. It also offers potential for us to do that without losing any existing trees, provides a better buffer for pedestrians walking along the street, and for anybody that wants to go out and experience it, if you just listen to the noise of the vehicles and watch their speed at Trinity Church versus in front of Tenant Roberts, you will absolutely see a difference. It's very noticeable. The other thing that we can do is begin to clean up things like the potential redevelopment of Erdman Hall, which will have the need for some sort of drop-off pickup, and perhaps place that also and consolidate it off of the rear lane driveway, maybe into a motor court, like you see pictured on the right. Basically, that would be in this location here. So there's a lot of benefits that we can put vehicles back of the house and allow for the streets to become more complete and pedestrian priority and safer. Edgehill Street, clearly there are some issues. It was historically a very narrow lane. It's been widened over time, and the intersections at both Mercer and Stockton have been flared a bit, particularly at Mercer. So the recommendation is to actually tighten it back up towards its historic lane configuration, perhaps have a sidewalk that straddles two feet into the street where the curb is today, two feet, I'll reverse that, back out onto the, just beyond the curb line, to at least get a sidewalk on both sides of the street, as well as tightening up the curb radii down at Mercer and just slightly at Stockton, get rid of that yellow, double-yellow line, create a little bit of confusion there to hopefully add greater yield on the turning movements. On Edgehill Street itself, we've talked about the idea of potential speed tables that would actually allow for a raising of the surface for a short period that also might interface with pedestrian circulation for campus expansion. At those locations, also the idea of potentially taking the Hidden Garden, that's behind this blank-walled bunker-like garage, and actually bringing that out to the street as a feature, perhaps even having it become a traffic-humming element. That's one idea. So we have this at our stations inside, both at Circulation with Georges and Bryan, and then at the back Design Table with a whole bunch of us. So we like to hear your input. I know that we've heard comments already from this afternoon from folks on Edgehill, I like this, this, maybe that, my neighbors like that. So we know there's lots of possibilities, one of which is to really revisit the, we feel a sort of a no-man's land at the back of Erdman, where perhaps it's contributing to some of the speeding, but you have this wonderful streetscape on one side of the street. On the other side, you have a somewhat sterile fence and this sort of institutional open space. Nobody can really use it. So maybe it can be transformed into a small neighborhood square that becomes a placemaking device that would allow for redevelopment on the urban campus to actually interface across the street and might have geometries slightly larger than what we're showing you here, and then a view from the other direction. So again, it becomes a way to handle that. On, excuse me, on Hibben Road, we actually talked about it, a different set of design improvements, because it's a different street than Edgehill. It's really a wonderful curvilinear garden suburb street in its vocabulary. And so we talked about a potential gateway entrance down on Mercer that might use some of the open space. It's a, an idea that it turns out was actually originally proposed in the first design for Hibben Road. We have yet to recover it, but it is in footprints on Edgehill Street. It is documented. There's a citation of a map number. And so that idea also could be coupled with addressing stormwater, which right now is running down Hibben and tending to sheet flow through some of the homes across the street in Mercer. That could be coupled with chicane's, small bumpouts or islands on, in the curving portion of Hibben Road, and located with the driveways. It won't prevent any of the backout, but again, becomes part of the sequence. I know it's a little hard to see the laser there. The top of the street, if the gym remains, we need to deal with the parking that currently spills down Hibben, often halfway down the street, sometimes further. So one idea is to create some sort of a one-way parking court on the far side, close to the entry to the gym. Other ideas might be that the gym itself goes away. Perhaps there is some sort of a green device. We had suggestions from a neighbor on Hibben this afternoon after really studying all these options and said, you know, maybe something that just tightens the street a little bit, but maybe no green at all is the best solution. And then we've looked at other ones as well. Other ways that we could terminate the residential precinct to the street from whatever happens in redevelopment on the Tenant Roberts Campus. The third goal we set was protecting buildings in open space. We can do that to a much greater degree than historic preservation and zoning can. Quick update on that, the buildings in black are those that we've identified for preservation. Shane mentioned the four homes. In addition to that, the purple buildings are the ones that are actually sited in the area in need of area in need of redevelopment study. Chris and Mark Hebden are at a station in the next room and can answer some questions about the existing buildings and preservation issues. On top of that, we also have some very obvious blank walls etched out there in orange, which provide some real visual challenges in the neighborhood. In addition to that, we also have driveway access points. We've already talked about some strategies, perhaps to consolidate or limit or close some of those driveways, and then existing parking in these locations. In addition to that, the blue arrows indicate where stormwater is flowing. There's all sorts of stormwater failure on the Tenet Roberts campus that runs down Hibben. And then, of course, there's also a chain link fence down at the corner of the open space of Mercer and Hibben, 12-foot tall. If you proposed a new 12-foot tall chain link fence in front of any park, open space, or schoolyard anywhere in Princeton, people would scream. It's been there for decades. Everybody's acclimated to it. We think there's a chance to revisit that. Again, it was one of our findings on this. And of course, the road noise and traffic from Stockton Street. Wrap up quickly here as we go to Goal Four, which is about enhancing those community gateways. So that noise and that speed is one of the greatest challenges we have along Stockton, and so we're really exploring different ideas. Is open space the only way to deal with that? There's also the potential of using actual built form that can help signal that arrival into town, the arrival at a campus, and perhaps be combined with on-street parking and other techniques to actually hit that gateway goal that's so important in the master plan. That goal comes out of the master plan. Developing appropriate transitions from campus to neighborhood, this is a major goal of the master plan. This is what we're focusing on in the back table of the room. There's a whole series of sketches that have been generated this afternoon with lots of neighborhood input, exploring different options. We have almost, we'll have too many options by the end of the night if I know some of the folks in the crowd here. We're also trying to balance or explore alternatives that balance the needs of the institution with the neighborhood. Again, this is a goal that comes right out of the master plan. And then lastly, you'll see when you go into the next room, the series of alternatives, sort of frameworks that got us started. We're looking for your input, direction. Tell us what you like. Tell us what you don't like. Tomorrow morning, we're going to hit it in the next room and really try to create a couple of concepts that explore these ideas, as well as what Shane mentioned, testing it against some of the recommendations from HPC, as well as testing it against existing zoning. And I, we're too far away to see it in detail, so we were at, looking at some initial concepts two weeks ago, and I think they're already evolving much past that. And Ewing Cole has prepared a series of building cutaways just to sort of illustrate the different typologies and the scale of those, and what they would propose in relation to the existing Tenet Hall. So with that last, I'd like to wrap up, and we'll talk more about this on Thursday evening, which is really the smart growth lens. And coming back out to look at this from a region-wide, you heard about some of that relative to the traffic and the fact that folks right now are living, as I like to say, over the river and through the woods, all the way over in, whoops, sorry, in West Windsor where that bottom red dot is, they have to use the Alexander Street corridor to come into town. And what are the trade-offs with having that population live closer to town, walking distance to transit, walking distance to daily services in town? And so I think we haven't really gotten into a robust discussion about that, but that is part of applying the smart growth lens, smart growth lens to what we're looking at. So with that, I'd like to break us out of this room and let everybody come back into the stations and please visit us, ask questions, and we'll be able to address your issues more one-on-one. Thank you.